6.2 or 9:06 AM item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And I say that we have Dr. Pace with us. Welcome and good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, the Supervisors. Gary Pace, County Public Health Officer here. We're here to give the COVID response update for Lake County. And I'll give a quick overview and then Sarah will talk about some of the data and then I'll come back and go into a little more detail. But basically, the case rates around the country are rising. So there's definite concern around the country in terms of what's happening with COVID. In California, they're continuing to drop and so things are looking pretty good here. Lake County, they're dropping although not as quickly as they are around the rest of the state. We are continuing to roll out the vaccine although we are seeing the demand dropping a bit and I'll talk about that a little bit. The tier status, we're still in the red tier but it looks like we may be able to move into the orange tier in the next few weeks. And the state is talking about ending the whole blueprint process probably in mid-June but it's going to be, they're going to come out with a big announcement about this today. But just to give you a heads up that this, the thinking is, is that things are, if things continue improving and we continue to get the vaccine out, that we will be able to dissolve this current blueprint framework in the next couple of months. And then I just want to mention quickly that about my status, so I'm leaving my position at the end of April, so at the end of this month. And I'm actually on vacation for the next couple of weeks, starting in a few days. Dr. Evan Bloom, who's an ER doc at Adventist but he's also been working with us for a while now, will be presenting the next few weeks at the board and Dr. Bloom's on the call today as well. And he'll be kind of in the seat here for the next couple of weeks while I'm gone and then I'll be back for a couple of weeks and then I'll be leaving after that point. So yeah, so thanks for all that. And then Sarah will go ahead and give some of the data and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Good morning, everyone. I have a quick update to show what's happening at the state level and in Lake County and the vaccination progress at the county level as well. Oh, sorry. Here we go. Okay. So statewide, testing had been, on the left is the graph of testing statewide and it had been declining really since the beginning of the year and our surge. And it looks like at the state level, sort of plateauing. So the testing rate statewide this week was about the same, actually slightly higher than it was last week. Test positivity on the right, so the seven-day rate, seven-day lag is 1.6%, which is the lowest that it's been since the beginning of the pandemic. But also, this has started to plateau around 1.6, 1.7. So we are monitoring these closely, particularly given what other states across the country are experiencing. Statewide, there were 3.5 million cases identified to date. The seven-day average is also starting to plateau and will have, for a daily case rate of about five cases per 100,000 in the state. So again, monitoring this closely, given things happening in neighboring states and across the country. And there have been over 58,000 COVID deaths identified. So we've shared the last couple of weeks about how the state set the goal to administer first 2 million doses in communities with less healthy community conditions, which was defined by the Healthy Places Index or the HPI. And the state reached that goal a couple of weeks ago in mid-March and that affected the case rates for the blueprint. And the state then set the goal of administering 4 million doses in these communities statewide. And they said when we reached that goal, that they were going to change the thresholds for the daily case rates to be less restrictive, given that more of us are now protected by the vaccine from the virus. So as of this moment, the state is reporting 3.96 million doses have been administered in those communities. I expect that the announcement of 4 million will be today, if not tomorrow. So once that officially happens, again, will be today or tomorrow, these new thresholds go into effect. So it'll be six to 10 daily new cases per 100,000 to be in the red tier and 2 to 5.9 to be in the orange tier. Currently, to move into the orange tier, it's 2 to 3.9. So essentially, once this shift happens today or tomorrow, it's a little bit, we can have a higher daily case rate to move into the orange tier. And so what I've indicated here at the bottom is how these new thresholds impact us in Lake County. So currently, we're in the red tier. We have to stay under 45 cases a week to stay in the red tier. For the orange tier, or moderate transmission, it's now 27 cases. And to get into the yellow tier would be fewer than, or no more than nine cases in a week. So here's the data that we expect to be announced later today. So like Dr. Pace said, we are currently in the red tier. The announcement today will be based on data from March 21st to the 27th. We expect a daily case rate of 4.2 per 100,000 and a testing positivity of 3.1%. Both these are down from last week. Last week, we had a daily case rate of about eight per 100,000. So it doesn't matter if the state, if we hit 4 million today or tomorrow, the implication for Lake County is that the state will do a look back and use these new thresholds for previous weeks to determine how we move through the tiers. So for this week, when it's officially announced today, Lake will have its first week of what we're calling orange metrics. If Lake County next week has another week with orange metrics, what we mostly need to watch is fewer than 27 cases in a week. That would be two consecutive weeks of orange metrics, which would then allow the county, based on the blueprint, to move into the orange tier. So you need two consecutive weeks of these better metrics, lower transmission, to move into a less restrictive tier. So I share all that just to hopefully provide context for how things may or may not be changing. So here's a graph just to show you the numbers of cases per week, which you can see here from February 28th really through March 20th, these three weeks here, which put us in the red tier. For this week, which will be announced today, March 21st to the 27th, we've identified 19 cases, which puts us into the orange tier. As of this moment, we've currently identified 20 cases for the following week. But, so we'll be monitoring that closely because test results are still coming in. So we don't know yet where our metric will fall. And that, of course, will influence the tier assignment next week. But big picture, do see some promising news after, you know, the last month or so of being fairly stable in terms of new cases in the county. It's good to see about 20 cases for the week of March 21st and hopefully we'll see, we'll continue to see that over the next couple of weeks. So I'm going to switch gears to give you an update on vaccination status across the county among residents 16 years of age or older. These data are as of late last night. So about 6,500 people are partially vaccinated, that's 12.4% of the eligible population, and 11,600 people are fully vaccinated. And this is about 22% of the eligible population. So altogether, about 35, according to these data, so reminder, these are data from the California Immunization Registry. They do not include doses administered by tribal health or Veterans Affairs. And so according to the California Immunization Registry data, about 35% of residents are at least partially protected. When we include data from tribal health partners, we know that about 38% of the population has at least partial coverage. So making good progress here, I think it just over the last week or so, about 1,600 more people had their second dose, providing more protection across the county. And then just, we'll close with an update on who's at least partially vaccinated by age group. So two out of three people, 75 years of age or older, are now, have been at least partially vaccinated and 61% of folks, 65 to 74. As more people become eligible on April 1st and then looking forward to April 15th, we are seeing an increase in people 55, 45, excuse me, to 64. And then among some of your younger age groups, I think we'll continue to see increases as these people are able to get appointments. Thanks very much and if there are any questions on the tiers, please let me know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. So really helpful. And so to kind of emphasize a few things, the current case rate is about 4.2. I think probably what's going to happen is they're going to cross the boundary today for the 4 million. We'll get credit for the first week, this week will, if things continue how they are, we'll get credit for next week. Next Tuesday, they will likely make the announcement that we're going to orange and then that first day of that will be next Wednesday. So again, there's some steps in the way, potential potholes, so there's no guarantee that this is going to be this way. It's a pretty complicated little strategy they've got going. But I think the most likely scenario is, is that starting next Wednesday, we will be in the orange tier, which means more opening of indoor venues, basically indoor dining can go to 50% and things like that. So it is further loosening up. I think, you know, the, what I want to talk a little bit about is what to anticipate. So we've been, you know, there's a lot of media play about a possible surge. We're seeing surges in the Midwest and in the East Coast that's looking a little bit ominous. And part of that seems to be related to the variants, which the variants are more prevalent out in the Midwest and in the East Coast and also the relaxing of restrictions and people getting fed up with doing the precautions and just not doing them anymore. So less masking, less social distancing. You know, to be in this framework where we're talking about potential surges at the same time we're relaxing restrictions is a little bit confusing and I think the big, the big difference is the vaccine. And so as you can see, the vaccine is rolling out. We are having some challenges with that, but let's go into some of the specifics. So the first thing I want to talk about is the variants. We, the variant, they're calling the West Coast variant or the 427 or 429, those are a couple of different ways it's characterized, it's all the same thing. This is up in California, probably 50% of the cases they're testing around California are in this, in this category of this variant. This does seem to be about 20% more contagious than the regular virus, but we're not seeing more deaths from it or anything like that. So, but it does seem to be spreading fairly quickly and it seems to spread faster than the original virus. The one that's more concerning is the B.117, which is the UK variant. And we have now identified two cases of this variant in Lake County. This appears to have come through some of the state surveillance testing and these were cases from back in mid-February, so almost two months ago now. We just got the word a couple of days ago. The B.117 seems to be what's causing this surge in the Midwest and also on the East Coast. It's probably 50% of the cases out in Michigan and Minnesota and some of those places are the B.117 and it seems to be quite a bit more contagious and also more deadly. So, you know, this is probably what's driving some of the surges around the country, but it's much lower out here in California now. It's really only maybe about 2% of the, of the cases that they've tested for the genomic testing is actually the B.117. There's some suspicion that maybe the California virus, the California variant is keeping the UK variant in check. We don't know that for a case, but it seems to be that maybe what's happening. But I think if, you know, basically what these variants are telling us, at least from the public health point of view, is that the virus is mutating, it's mutating in ways that make it more contagious and to get the vaccine out into people's arms as soon as possible is the best, best thing we can do. And also, people need to continue being careful because you don't want to catch this and spread it around to your family and your friends. The, at this point, there's no real evidence that either of these two variants is escaping the vaccine. I mean, certainly people that are vaccinated, it's possible you'll get, you can still get infected. There are definitely cases of that happening, but these variants don't seem to be any more able to escape the vaccine than, than the other wild variant and the wild type. And, and we're just not seeing that much. Pretty much when people are vaccinated, we're seeing them not get infected. And so, so let's talk about the vaccines. What we're seeing over the last two weeks is decreased demand. We have a pretty, a good supply now. We're actually starting to get vaccine supplies that we can't use as fast as we need to now. This is the first time this has happened in the, since the vaccine started becoming available. And, you know, it's, this is not where we want to be. We want to get everybody back, you could see where there's maybe a third of the population, maybe a little more upwards of 40% of the people 16 and older are vaccinated now and we want to get that up to 80%, 90%. And so, but we're not, people aren't showing up now the way they were before. So we have to kind of ask, what's going on here? And, you know, I think the first possible problem is that everybody that's eligible that wants it has gotten it. And there's a lot of people that want it, but they're not eligible yet, so they can't get in. And so if that's the problem, what we're doing is we're expanding the eligibility as far as we can. So basically, people that are 50 and over now can just, can just sign up at any of the sites and they're eligible statewide. The people 16 to 49 that don't have any other conditions are on the state framework, they're not eligible yet, but they will be on the 15th, which is just next week. But even now, if people that are under 50 want to get vaccinated, we're, we're trying to run a site on our webpage where they can sign up. And then we're trying to put together a phone network that will call those people up and have a workaround to get them in to get vaccinated. It's, the state has approved this, they just, the state computer setup won't let us do it automatically. So it requires, you know, the human touch. And so we're just trying to set up the staffing for all that now. But we've got, we've asked, we put this out last week and we've got maybe 120 people signed up for it. So we're trying to get back to them and get them into the, into the thing. So, but basically, the point here is that we're not seeing the demand that we want. We've got more vaccine, then we've got people that want it. And we're trying to figure out what are the problems, what are the things preventing it? The first one is the eligibility and we're trying to expand the eligibility as far as we can. And by next, by next, by the 15th, so next Thursday, everybody 16 and older will be eligible. But even before then, if you want to get it this week, you can contact us and we're going to try to get you in early. The second thing is, the second possibility, so first is eligibility, second is just the hassle with the appointments. The appointment process has been a nightmare. We acknowledge that and we accept some responsibility for it, but I want to put a lot of it on the state because they made it a lot more complicated the way they did it in terms of the, my, this MyTurn platform and everything. So we had to go through this whole process of changing the online appointment process and that started a couple of weeks ago and there's been a lot of problems with it. But we think it's getting better now and is probably at least workable and will probably be workable through the duration of this, this process. But people need, the way to get an appointment is you go online, myturn.ca.gov and sign up if you're eligible. If you can't do it through the online platform, you call, there's a phone number there on the, on either our website or you can get it by calling 211, you can get it by calling the Mohawk line, there's a bunch of ways to get it. But if you don't, if you don't have the online access, you can call this phone number. If you speak Spanish, they have Spanish-speaking operators. If that doesn't work, just contact us at the Mohawk line and we'll figure out how to get you in. We want to get people in, we know this is a hassle and it's just the way it is. That's what we have to deal with. And then, but I think, so the first problem, possible obstacle is eligibility. We've got to take care of that. The second obstacle is just the appointment process and we're working on that. The third is hesitancy and it's like, you know, you see, we're seeing a bunch of information in the media right now about people that don't want to get the vaccine. And, you know, there's going to be a certain percentage of people that aren't going to get it for a variety of reasons and there's probably nothing we can do about that. But then there's a lot of people that maybe if they get more information or maybe if we make it easier somehow, like we get the vaccine closer to them or something like that, it'll work. There was a, something that came out in Press Democrat last week that said 25% of the North Bay residents don't plan on getting it. And that was much higher than other people in the Bay Area. And I suspect it's even higher in Lake County and Mendocino Counties, that the more rural northern counties are probably going to have higher percentages than that. There was another thing I saw recently that said 50% of the white evangelical population was not planning on getting it. It didn't fit in with their belief framework. There was another one I saw that said 50% of the Republican men said they're not going to get it. So, you know, so there's all these different kinds of groups that are having different reasons for not getting it. The African-American population has a higher incidence of people not getting it, the Native American population as well. So, you know, I think it's, the message I want to give and give clearly is, is that as far as we can tell, this is very safe. We've had very few problems with people having bad reactions. We, it does seem to be extremely effective and so from any kind of science-based point of view, it makes sense to get it and get it as soon as you can, not to wait because these variants are moving around, it's going to be a lot more problematic. But I think people have other reasons why they're not doing it and we're trying to figure out ways to address that. We've actually encouraged people to start sending us in emails to the Mohawk line or to, emails are best, but you can call if you need to. And give us, you know, some idea of why it is people are not getting vaccinated. Is it because you can't get through the appointment situation or is it because you just don't want to get it and you're not planning on getting it no matter what? I mean, if people will give us, give us some feedback on this and I've been trying to talk to some of the, the groups, the rotaries and the different folks around the community to see what they have to say about this and it's just not particularly clear. I think at this point, the one consistent thing I've heard is that we probably need to figure out a way to get it out to people out in the community. There's homebound seniors, there's people with disabilities, there's folks in remote communities that just aren't going to get in, it's just too much hassle to get in. And so we're trying to get it, the capacity to go out and provide it to people out in the outlying areas. It's just, you know, right now, we're just struggling to keep up with the whole thing with the, with the vaccine centers and all that and just with a lot of these changes coming from the state, we're just running as fast as we can to keep it going. But we're very interested in that and we want to, we want to get the numbers up as high as we can because that's what's going to make a difference for us getting back to normal. So just the last piece of this, I just want to talk about kind of what I think the long-range plans is and what we can expect here. I think, you know, we have one or two more months of trying to have this drive-through sites with these big numbers that we're trying to get, you know, we, we can provide 500 to 1,000 doses a day there and we've got a staff for that, we're ready to go. But, you know, if the demand is starting to decline, we just probably need to start cutting that back and moving more to having the local providers, medical providers give it and we're trying to get the OptumServe sites to do some of the vaccines as well. So to go away from this big thing to move as much vaccine as we can quickly, to just go into a more normal day-to-day kind of routine, that's probably going to be happening over the next one or two months. I think the surge question is a, is a real important thing for people to notice, to be aware of. We had this pretty close to devastating surge back in January. We got very close to being in trouble there and luckily, things receded and everybody did the, did the big work of keeping the hospitals afloat and keep people moving through there, so we did okay. You know, now all the experts are talking about potential new surges. I personally don't think it's going to be like it was in January. I think we're going to see cases, I think very likely we're going to see a higher level of cases than we want to see for an extended period of time. But because the most vulnerable people have gotten protected, if you go back and think about one of Sarah's slides about the elderly population, 2/3 of those folks are covered and pretty much everybody in the nursing homes are covered. So the people that really got sick before are protected and as long as the vaccine keeps working the way it does, we, I think we're going to be okay there. So I don't think it's going to be as devastating. I think people are still going to get sick, people are still going to go in the hospital, some people are going to die unfortunately, but it's not going to be the numbers and the level that we were seeing before. And the more vaccine we can get out, the better, the less that's going to be that way. And I think the, the last part of this is that if people can, people are going to start seeing different opportunities for people that are vaccinated than for people that are not vaccinated. They're starting to do now that for travel, for plane flights, some places are starting to require vaccines, status or a negative test in the last three days, you know. And so it's going to be, it's to certain kind of public venues over the summer are going to require either complete vaccination or a negative test before you can come in. So these kind of things are going to start becoming more and more frequent and I think it's just going to be a lot easier for people if you go ahead and get the vaccine and you're going to be a lot safer. So I think that's really everything I wanted to mention today, so thanks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. And I did not acknowledge Dr. Bloom that was here with us and I want to make sure that he has the chance to speak on the subject while he is here. And I believe next week will be your first full report to us or is that in two weeks?
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for the introduction. It should be next week as far as I am aware and that's what I'm planning on. And as far as any other comments regarding what Gary said, I think I really just want to echo what Gary said and that really the focus is getting vaccine into arms and finding what those barriers are because that is really the key to us moving forward back to a state of normalcy. Other than that, I'll be brief and say thank you for allowing me to speak and for the introduction and that I don't have anything else to add to what Gary succinctly has already stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Scott.
I do have a comment. Dr. Pace, thank you for your update for us. You know, I'm thinking too, some of the hesitancy of getting vaccinated too might also be in account, if you, if you listen to the news, we're being told that there's long lines, there's no appointments. Maybe we need to put a blast out there, letting Lake County know that we do have these appointments and now that you have this other system set up, that people that are under the age of 50 might be able to get in and get vaccinated, maybe we really need to push that because people may not be looking to get an appointment, thinking that they're not going to get one or, you know, that they're not going to be available. So I think it's something we need to be pushing for, for our community.
And actually, if you don't mind, I'll speak right away on that because I want to jump on that idea. I have not necessarily seen us do a social media blast other than just posting. Maybe we need to actually pay to advertise and we can geographically say who will see the ad and obviously, we can keep it to just folks who are registered as Lake County residents on social media and they will see those advertisements and we can say, everyone is eligible, please use these following steps in order to get access to an appointment. We can do that through our local medias as well and put an advertisement up. I think that we have some funding coming from either our CARES Act that might still be available or obviously, there's more coming in from the American Rescue Plan. And I'm sure we have some funding to be able to make that happen as that is not going to be a huge cost in order to do so. And again, it would definitely push the word out to make sure everybody is aware that we are starting a little earlier than what the state is messaging, which is April 15th. Any other comment? Any other comment?
I would just add to that, maybe we could do a radio campaign to reach the people that are on social media. I appreciate the interest form. I filled it out myself so that if there's available appointments, I can jump down there in the afternoon. So I really appreciate that both my husband and I are signed up. So I encourage anybody that is not quite 50 yet to fill out the interest form on the latest press release and get your name in the hat there. So I had a constituent who was having difficulty making an appointment yesterday. And so I'm glad you talked about that, the difference between having your first shot before the MyTurn app and then your second shot after the MyTurn app. It can be a little complicated. And both you, Dr. Pace and Carol, recommended this constituent reach out to the Mohawk Line and they were able to make the appointment yesterday. So thanks for touching on that. It's a little complicated.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Supervisor Grandle?
Yes, Dr. Pace, you were mentioning, and glad we're discussing it, that there's a lot of reluctance to take the vaccination. And then there's also, one thing I'm noticing is a lot of discussion and, you know, thought that the vaccination doesn't really make people safe, they feel. Like they think that you're just going to catch it again. And so there's some people that are just not taking it because of that. So when we're talking about maybe doing some of these media campaigns, maybe there's something we can kind of hit some points on that campaign to say, it will keep you safe. You still need to do X, Y, and Z to stay safe. But you're, you know, here's the percentages that show you're less likely to, you know, things like that. Because there's just some folks that are just like, I'm not going to take it either way. And I'm like, why? You can go take it right now, you know. So just wanted to highlight that. That's all.
Personally, I prefer the United Kingdom way of their warning on their cigarettes, where it just literally says, cigarettes kill. No Surgeon General warning. It's very obvious what the outcomes could be if you get addicted to this product. And we should just say, hey, it keeps you alive. Take the vaccine. I think we need to be very direct. But thank you very much for the report. Very good news coming out. Glad that our metrics right now are showing that we're already within orange. It's a matter of us staying there for two consecutive weeks. Last week, we were at 3.6 million for that, out of the 4 million. Obviously, we're very close with 3.9 something million at this moment in time. So yes, within the next day or so, we're definitely going to hit that number. That's going to increase the metric to make it easier to stay within orange. Right now, I believe you have to reach 4.9 out of 100,000. As of the next time, once we hit that 4 million, it's going to go up to 5.9. And so that's going to make it that much easier for us to ensure that we can continue and decrease from red and go into orange. I have not heard of any changes so that they can loosen up yellow. Is that something that, I haven't heard it be discussed in CSAC unless I missed it. But I do not believe I have heard of yellow being loosened up. Or again, if we reach maybe 6 million or 8 million, they'll go ahead and loosen up the case rate to reach that. Have you heard any of that, Dr. Pace?
You know, let me check. I'm not sure about that. You know, always just focused on the next one ahead, really. And Sarah just wrote to me right now and said that we, the state does report that we've crossed over the 4 million now. So we are at the point where we are clearly in the orange tier for the last week. So if it goes forward the same way, we should go forward. And I'll have to check on the yellow one, or maybe Sarah can do it if she's still on and let me know. Yeah. So the other thing I just wanted to mention, I did forget to mention is because of the way the state has been loosening the eligibility criteria and that there's not so many complicated workarounds from it and kind of special situations, the Ethics Committee was extremely helpful in working with us for, I don't know, six weeks or so. And they are now kind of on, the pause button has been pushed with them so that they don't have to keep meeting with us every weekend. Because there's really not a whole lot of need at this point in the way it's set up. But we really have appreciated their help and kind of helping navigating this complicated situation, so.
Thank you for that update. Also, I do know the state was speaking about creating a green tier because there was nothing further than yellow, which still had some restrictions. To me, it sounds like the green tier has been thrown out the window and the idea that the entire tiered system might be gone by the timeline of June that you gave us today. So let's see what happens there. I will say that as far as the hesitancy, I think that unfortunately, it's about the timeline that we're in. It's the era we're in is the perfect storm for hesitancy from the mistrust in media, which is a very unfortunate situation, and the mistrust in healthcare. We are still dealing with the opioid crisis. That is something that definitely has impacted our communities and that came directly through our healthcare systems. And so I think that that trust needs to be rebuilt. And unfortunately, the pandemic hit us again in a perfect storm of that situation. And so I think we need to make sure to get the right messaging out. And hopefully, hopefully, we can do something as we've discussed here. I don't know if we should be looking for consensus, but to advertise, to put a social media blast where we actually pay to sponsor an ad to go out to the people we want to reach out to. And then just reiterating what Dr. Pace said and what Sarah said, I think it's amazing news. By April 13th, if we keep going at the rate that we're going, we will hopefully be reaching the orange tier. And as of now, everyone is eligible, if they want to get the vaccine, to get the vaccine. And the best way to keep going from red to orange and orange to yellow and keep moving forward is to get the vaccine. Also, I do want to remind people that because things seem to be getting better, and they are getting better, doesn't mean that the precautions are going away at this point in time. And I know that there's been some difficulties with businesses trying to make sure and enforce these rules and people feeling like they can relax on these rules. Make sure to be respectful to the businesses that are continuing to follow the guidelines that they have in place. Some of them have their own personal guidelines, as well as the guidelines from the state of California. Each business has the right to create their own. As far as extra further from what the state has done, please respect those businesses as they want to be cautious and keep their staff safer as much as possible. So please make sure to be respectful and mindful of all the rules in all the different businesses and things like that, because it is still continuing. Other than that, that's all that I had for today as well. Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah. Once again, I just want to thank, you know, all the volunteers, Public Health Officer, Dr. Pace, everybody who's volunteered, you know, and just worked hard throughout this whole pandemic to get us where we are now. And I think the most important thing, talking today, obviously, we've already touched on it. You know, get vaccinated if you have an opportunity to do that. If you are someone who is making the choice not to get vaccinated, please continue to stick to the safety protocols that are out there. They'll protect all of our members in the community. And Supervisor Shabatia just hinted to please respect the businesses that are attempting to do everything. We're moving in the right direction now. The worst thing that could happen is that we go backwards and we don't want that to happen. So please, get the information. If you don't want to get the shot, if you don't want to get vaccinated through the county opportunities, please reach out to your public health provider, get your questions answered, and hopefully get that vaccine. And we've already spoke about tribal health. I know they've expanded their opportunities, the opportunities there now. Throughout this whole pandemic, we've talked about local control. We're getting it back now. Let's keep it and let's keep moving forward. So that's my final message.
Thank you for that. And actually, you reminded me of a question I had, but I forgot to write down. Dr. Pace, would you like to give us a brief summary of how are things working with the state staff that we've received? I believe we had 44 show up. Just kind of curious as to how that's working out in alleviating some of the overtime and just the hard work that our staff has had to do in the past months during the surge and now the vaccination clinics and everything else.
Right. That's a great question. Thanks for asking. It's, so the state staff have been a huge addition for us. At first, I was thinking like, oh, you know, folks are going to come in from out of state and they're not, you know, they're just not going to have the same attitude that local folks would have taking care of people. But for the vast majority of the interactions, it sounds like they're very positive. The people are really nice and conscientious in taking good care of folks in the county. So we really appreciate, you know, there's always a few folks that aren't sticking with it and are going back home, but for the most part, we're doing really well. And the hard part is really, so now what we have is kind of the foot soldiers, you know. And now we have the vaccine. But where we're, where we're just still a little overwhelmed is with just the coordination and kind of the leading, leadership of the folks, the same folks that have been doing all this for the case investigation and contact tracing for the testing, you know, it's the same handful of folks. And it's, they're, you know, it's just taken its toll. And but overall, this, the state help has been tremendous. I don't think we would be able to still have these sites up at this point if they hadn't shown up. So it's been very, very appreciated. You know, the volunteer staff that we had and the other county staff that were redeployed and the folks from other agencies have all been a tremendous help. Again, there's no way we would be seeing these numbers of a third plus of the population vaccinated at this point if it wasn't for that. Because, you know, in other counties, a lot of the healthcare community is the main ones putting this out. But our small hospitals don't, and clinics don't really have the staff to spare. They're too busy taking care of patients. And so it's been really fallen on the Health Department to coordinate this and kind of materialize the staff. And so now with the state resources coming in, it's really helped a lot.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that report. Any other question before we open it up for the public?
Mr. Chair, sorry, there's one more thing I just wanted to mention is that the Health Department sites, the big sites through MyTurn, are one way to get vaccinated. And that's, you know, we're doing the most numbers right now. But Sutter and Adventist are both doing vaccine for their patients, but also for the community. So if you're at the Sutter end of the lake, you can call them up and get an appointment and get vaccinated, as well as folks at the Adventist end of the lake. And you don't have to be previous patients with them. They both are able to do that. Also, Safeway Pharmacy is doing some and Northlake Pharmacy is doing some. So just want to encourage people to go wherever it's easiest for them to get it. It's all good. It doesn't cost, none of them cost. And you don't have to have insurance. You don't have to have documentation status or anything. They just will vaccinate you, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. If you have a comment, please click on the button on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're on your phone, please press star nine. And it looks like we have a hand up. I can't see where it is. Phone ending in 6205.
And I sent a permission for phone 6205 to speak. I sent another request to unmute. If you dial star six, you should unmute. All right, looks like you're.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you can give us your full name, please.
Please confirm your first and last name.
Thank you. My name is Bart Levinson. I just wanted to report, I've tried several times to use the Call 211 Information System. And what they are reporting is that it's normal for there to be a 15-minute wait to contact anyone. So I just wanted to let the county know that that might be a good information source in the future. But for now, it's not a very usable way to get information about the vaccinations or anything else.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Again, if you wish to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand or press star nine on your phone. And then we have Will Tuttle. Oh, looks like you just muted.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting for Mr. Tuttle to get his audio, I just want to let you know we have a temporary interruption in the Facebook stream. And Sam is in the process of stopping and restarting that feed now. And so whatever was missed would be available on Facebook to watch after. So there has been a short gap with that stream.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. Go ahead, Mr. Tuttle.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to say that I think there's a lot of resistance to this vaccine because people realize that this is an experimental vaccine. It has not been approved really to be used. It's being used on an experimental basis. And I personally think it's really irresponsible for the Board of Supervisors to be promoting this vaccine when it's doing a lot of damage and killing a lot of people and also causing a lot of injuries all over the world. According to VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, there's now over 2,000 people have been killed, died following the vaccine, just in the United States. And according to studies by Harvard and by Johns Hopkins, only roughly 1% of these cases are reported. So there very well could have been hundreds of thousands of people killed by this vaccine already. And it's just not being reported by the media. The former Pfizer Chief Scientific Officer, Mike Eden, just came out saying, I have no, absolutely no doubt that we are in the presence of evil. He's saying that this vaccine is being administered in order to basically harm people because that's how the pharmaceutical industry makes its money. Pharmaceutical industry has absolutely no, nothing to lose. I mean, they're completely free of all liability. And when people get harmed, and there's been all kinds of terrible things that are happening to people. We were just in the restroom the other day and my wife was talking to a woman going into the bathroom and she said, yeah, her brother-in-law just died two days after having the vaccine. This is happening all over the place. It's not being reported. So I think this, it's very egregious that you're just going along and playing ball with these gigantic pharmaceutical industries. Pfizer and these other companies are corporate criminals that have been fined billions of dollars for harming people's health over the decades. And we're acting like we can trust them with an experimental vaccine that's never been used on animals? And we're just putting it to people and you're encouraging Lake County residents to risk their health and their lives for something with, and the death rate of COVID is only 0.6%. I mean, 99.4% of people do not die from this. And it's only, the average age of death of people dying of COVID is 78.6 years. And the average lifespan of Americans is 78.6 years. So it's only hitting older people. Why are you pushing to have young people be vaccinated with something that's dangerous? It's only going to risk their lives. I mean, it's very irresponsible to use art, to use money, public money, to promote something that's just helping the vaccine industry. And so that's, you really have to look at the other side of this and stop putting people at risk for this vaccine.
Thank you for your comment. I will have to comment on that comment that babies are healthy and we give them vaccinations too to make sure that they do not get sick from the things that we know are very harmful to our civilization. We have stopped entire diseases through vaccinations. This is not an experimental drug. mRNA vaccinations have been around. This is new for COVID-19, the specific virus we're dealing with, yes, but not the type of vaccine that it is. And the data that you are providing is not correct. That is not the death rate, that is not the appropriate death rate. You are misconstruing it by looking at the population numbers versus those that have died versus the cases and those that have died. We have to make sure that we don't look at correlation and look at causation. Because it's easy to say that because something happened after I did that, that I can't, I can't do that. It needs to be a little bit more scientific in the way that we approach these things. Yes, there are some adverse effects. And yes, it's possible that some of those adverse effects are detrimental. But that is not the case in what has been seen with the millions and millions of vaccines that have been provided worldwide. So just, I'm going to let people make their comments, but I will also make sure and correct it with the data that I believe is the factual data to make sure that we don't provide the wrong message. As we just discussed, how do we make sure that that message goes out to ensure that people are aware of what is true and factual about the vaccine? Any other hands up for another public comment? And I do not see any more. And I see that Mr. Tuttle has his hand up, but he's already had his three minutes. So that is why. had his three minutes, so that is why we are going to move on. And any further comment from the board before we finish deciding?
Public here?
Yes, sorry. Is there any comments from the Board of Supervisors Chamber? I had to check, thank you very much. All right. Dr. Pace, Dr. Bloom, Sarah, thank you so much for your reports today, and looking forward to Dr. Bloom next week.